All right, we'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is acceptance of minutes. I have sent to Valerie just two typographical changes, what she will, I imagine, make.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing for 197 High Street. There's communication from the attorney of record asking for this to be withdrawn without prejudice. Is there a motion? Actually, is there discussion?
No, I make the motion that they continue it.
It's to be withdrawn, Alan. They're pulling it entirely.
I make a motion that-
Motion to allow the withdrawal?
Yeah. I make a motion to allow the withdrawal.
Is there a second?
I thought it was continued to June 12. It's not withdrawn, but it's-
He gave me a withdrawn. He wants to continue to June? All right.
So it's continued.
All right. Continue. I beg your pardon, the correspondence that I got just said withdrawn without prejudice. In any event, all right, so is there a motion to continue to June 12?
I make a motion to continue it.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Next item on the agenda is 1717 Turnpike, continued public hearing of 1717 Turnpike Street. If you'll remind us all.
Good evening. Philip Christensen as engineer for the applicant. We also have here tonight Ernest DeMaio, and he's the architect. He'll present the architectural drawing for the project. We've made some changes in this since the hearing. We listened to what you had to say. One of the big changes is the parking's been removed from the rear of the property. If you remember our original plan, we had parking in the back. The building's slightly smaller, but what we did was we moved the parking, I mean, moved the building to that direction. So originally, we were trying to stay inside the normal zoning for the area, the setbacks, the normal setback requirements, not considering the extra 15 feet because it abuts a residential neighborhood. But in order to get the parking out of the back, we needed to slide the building to the side. So what we've done is, we have to increase the variance request on that left side of the property, so it's down to 18 feet. But we do have 12 parking spaces, the handicap space, building 65 by 40. As we mentioned originally, we cannot meet the 100-foot setback from the street because the lot's only 100 feet deep. And the setback requirement, as you know, is an additional 15 feet to all the setbacks, front side and rear, if you abut a residential. We abut residential in the rear only, not on the sides. But building inspector says that applies to the entire property, not just the rear where the residential is. So that's basically the project. What one of the things we did here, too, was we wanted some landscaping. And the real issue on the landscaping is really screening for the neighbors in the back. So we're proposing to put arborvitae along the backside of the property, space 10 feet on center, and fast-growing trees to screen this building from the residential area behind it.
I'm sorry, I may have missed a detail. What's going to be planted? Arborettes, you said?
Arborettes.
And the intention is how bigger the arborite is going to be at construction?
When they come in, they're about 6 feet. And then they grow from there, obviously. Would like to show you the building design, get a feel of what the facade of the building would be like. If Ernest could come up and show you that.
My name is Ernest DeMaio. I'm the owner of Tectonics Architects in Salem, Mass. We're the architects for the project. The proposed structure is, it varies in height from the front of the building to the back of the building. The rear elevation of the building has a height, the roof slope actually comes down from the front towards the back, and we're 14 and 1/2 feet tall on the residential side of the building. So we're essentially one story on the backside or the residential-facing side of the building. On the street side of the building, the building is two-story on the front, and that's mainly to have some storage space on the upper level. The head height on the second floor goes from zero on the second floor in the back up to about 12 and 1/2 feet on the front of the building. The building is comprised of mostly transparent retail on the ground level with some awnings, a few signs strategically placed over the entry, and some sign proposed on the end wall of the building. There's a central stair that's accessed from the back of the building that goes up to the storage level. Utility mechanical spaces are in the back of the building and are mostly placed along the front and the side of the building. We are envisioning the materials, the primary materials, to be very simple, almost a stucco-like finish on the Turnpike Street elevation and turning the corners, and then a simple, almost residential siding along the sides in the back of the building. Happy to discuss.
Okay. I don't think you're allowed to down that many signs. So did you look at our bylaw? And actually, are you taking the sign that's there now, which is an internally illuminated sign?
Well, to address some of your questions, I'm not sure about, I don't think we're doing an internally illuminated sign.
Well, that's what's there now.
Okay. But in reference-
Which is the same design there.
In reference to the signage in the area, I think one does an examination of the signage immediately adjacent to us at the gas station, and also in the other retail buildings immediately adjacent.
They could be grandfathered. You're a new application. Did you look at our signed bylaw?
Right.
I don't think you can put that many signs on one building.
No.
So you need to review the bylaw.
Okay, we will do so.
Yep.
While we're on the subject, I will talk about passing in signage for the buildings in the neighborhood.
There are, if they are, they're grandfathered, they got a permit, you don't know.
May I, may I?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. The existing site is here. This is our immediate neighbor, the gas station. There's a sign at the gas station that's existing that's four foot wide by 13 foot high, seven feet in the air. We know because we measured it. The sign letters are 16 inches high. There's 52 square feet of signage on each side of the sign. There's 104 square feet of signage on this particular sign. That's not including any of the signs that are on the buildings or on any of the pumps. The other retail buildings in the immediate area, so here's our site in plan. Here are some of the retail buildings that are immediately in the vicinity, let's say. This is 1812 Turnpike Street. The sign bands are taller with larger letters than what we're proposing, with much larger signage area than what we're proposing. We have, on our particular project, a total of 84 square feet of signage with 18-inch high letters. The gas station signage is 104 in this one sign, and we didn't add the areas of the signage on the other parts of the gas station, but obviously, it's a larger number than that. At 1820 Turnpike Street, and this approximate length is the length of the building that we're proposing here, this is about 58 feet, and we're just slightly larger than that. They have 150 square feet of sign on this one piece of the building, and all of the signs are on two-foot sign bands. So there's essentially, there's more than twice the signage area that we're proposing on this particular building, which was fairly recently constructed. Grandfathered or not, I don't know the answer to that, but this is a new building, and the signage here is much larger and much more extensive than what we're proposing. In terms of the heights of some of the projects, this building, the top of the ridge, which we measured by laser, is approximately 35 feet in height to the ridge, which is about eight feet taller than what we're proposing on the building that we're showing you tonight. The existing 1812 Turnpike Street is about 30 feet in height, so it's about two feet taller than the building that we're proposing tonight. Again, more signage on each of these buildings than we're proposing. And even in terms of the residential buildings that are in close proximity to the site, we have three homes that are sort of the immediate abutters to the site. Building two on this is actually shown here, that's 15 Colonial. The top of the ridge on that house is 29 feet, which is actually a foot taller than the highest point of our building. The top of the ridge of 10 Colonial is approximately the same elevation, 28 feet, as to the building that we're proposing on the front. And 20 Colonial has a ridge height of 31 feet to the top of their ridge. The point, the point of this is not necessarily to criticize abutting neighbors, it's more or less to show the scale of the building that we're proposing in the context that we're proposing. And also, as one drives along 114 and passes these resident, retail properties, what you're encountering in terms of scale of building, which all of them are larger, and scale of signage, all of which is more extensive than what we're proposing. Now, we look back, and obviously-
You're gonna have to. So I'm assuming that those buildings, which had, actually probably have scale of building to scale a lot, might be very different from here.
Point taken.
I'm sure those have gone through the planning board with a signed planage that you're not citing. That could have had a variance on that sign. It's a gas station, which required a different signage. So you're gonna need to, it's not my responsibility to look at the signed bylaw.
Absolutely.
You know, if you're having that many signs, you need to present.
Right. Well, we have four. We don't have many, we have four. We have two on the front of the building because there are two retail spaces.
Which might be two more than you can, that are allowed.
But we have two retail spaces, so obviously, each retail is allowed to have a sign on the front of the building.
Mm-hmm.
So no matter what the zoning ordinance is-
Correct.
Each retail is allowed to have a sign on the front of their building. So the question is whether or not we're allowed to have a sign on the side of the building-
Correct.
... which will determine. So, but obviously, if you have a retail building, you're allowed to have a sign over your entry.
Externally illuminated.
Well, that sign that we have right now is not going to be on that building.
Right.
You're just putting a sign up here.
That sign is actually internally illuminated, so.
Right, but that's not the sign that's going to be on there.
It's just the same design. I was just pointing it out.
Yeah. He just wanted a sign.
Yep. I get it. My other question is, now, you're saying that you're 1180 square feet, and these are both 1180?
Yes.
So is that correct? So it's gross?
Yes, because there are elements that are on the utility side of the building that are not included within the retail footprint. Their access front and back are not part of the retail footprint.
What Alan was referring to is on the variance plan.
Says 1180.
It suggested that there's a four-chair salon and 1,180 gross square feet of retail.
It's actually 2,360.
Correct.
For each one of these retail.
But this is not what we have.
That's not reflected here.
That's our, yeah.
It's always a challenge for us when the applicant comes in with an idea that's very different from-
Our Yamila.
The stamp plans.
I can assure you that the gross square footage of retail that we show on these plans, 1180 and 1180, is accurate, it was done on the computer.
But the stamp plan is inaccurate, is what we're determining, correct?
It does, collectively, it's 2,360. And the site plan needs to show collectively the building, not the individual suites or units or-
Stars.
The 1180 is, you have to determine the parking area. So one of the things on that is that the parking area, from the square footage of the utilized space, that's what the 1180 is used for, to determine the parking area of the retail space.
So what?
I mean, the building itself is, we have 65 by 40, and that's the building.
Is there enough parking? Listen, is there enough parking?
What you're saying is you showed that as a total retail on the plan.
Confused, yeah.
And it's double, it's double that number.
Okay. Yes. I was concerned about parking when I did that. So the four chairs is part of the parking requirement.
So it's-
Two spots per chair, and the 1180 is the gross square footage of the retail space.
And-
And that requires, I think, 3 and 1/2 per space. So if you look down below on the parking salon and office, you have four seats, two per seat is eight spaces, and office is 1180 times 3 and 1/2, that's four spaces. So that's the 12 spaces of the parking area.
Still confused.
So I understand that number and the-
So what is the accurate number?
Well, I think what he's saying is that the number for the retail is correct, the 1180 for the retail is correct, but then there's the office component, which was not included in that square footage calculation.
So what's the totals square foot of the whole building?
2,360.
Right?
That's all I wanted, thank you.
We have 1180 times 2.
2,360.
Don't make me do math. I use the calculator. Do it all day long. Don't want to do any more. So can you just run by your variances again for me? So, I mean, it's 25 plus 15, and you have 23, but I'm seeing 18. I'm kind of a little confused.
I'm sorry, right.
I realized after I seen it.
Okay.
I didn't change that, so.
This is the new approved?
Well, kinda. I'm not looking at my phone, I'm doing math. Thank you.
Sounds acute.
And plus, I need to do it myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, the front offset, we don't meet, obviously. That's 100, we have 26. Side offset, if you take 25, add 15 to it, you're up to 40. We have 18 on the left side or the south side. We do comply on the right side or the north side of the property. The rear requirement is 35 plus 15, we only have 36 feet. And obviously, the lot area, we don't have. Lot area's 25,000, and this is 15,000, the existing lot.
So the only thing that this lot meets with the proposed building is the frontage?
The only thing it meets?
The-
Yes.
Okay.
But obviously, it's a grandfathered lot.
The right side setback, that's met.
It's 68 feet, yes.
That's not it.
That left side setback goes 18 feet. That really abuts a narrow, empty lot, too, right?
It does. That's correct.
Right, so it's not like it's abutting the street or something. It's abutting an unbuiltable lot.
A lot smaller than this one.
Right, yeah.
Which we're trying to locate the owner to acquire it, though.
I noticed that you guys went to the fire department.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And just a clue in the gallery, the fire department has indicated that they're, they've reviewed the building to be proposed by Mr. and Mrs. Fregatos, and the access needs are met with this proposal.
So you still have to do planning and conservation? What?
No conservation, but we will have to file a site plan if we get this approval of the building.
So the signage should be with the planning board, not with us?
Yes.
Just enough-
We're not, we're not asking for any variances on sign size, Seidner.
But we couldn't accept that until it was reviewed.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board at this time?
Thanks, sir.
No. All right.
The only thing I have to say is, sooner or later, something's going to be proposed for the site. Nothing is going to meet what it should be because the lot is so undersized, okay? And if we simply do not approve anything, just let it be vacant land, the town has had eminent domain taken here. My personal opinion, the man has come back, I think, with a very reasonable plan, okay? I mean, he's addressed all the neighbors to the back. I know they won't be happy, okay? But he has, you know, a line of arborite, all the parking in the rear has been gone. The parking faces the gas station, which has a multiple traffic in zone, right? Right, with cars coming and going? I see the plan in front. Seems like a nice little plan. I mean, obviously, I don't have to have my hair done, okay? I don't see anything wrong with it, to be honest with you. I think it's a nice compromise for the lot of land that's there. And it's compromising, okay? The first plan was totally wrong, okay? It was way, way too busy. But I see the corrections here, and the man is trying to make it work.
Any questions? We could move on to public comment. All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be recognized? Then speak. Come on up. Please just introduce yourself at the onset with your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Kendrick, Dr. John Kendrick. I live in that left-hand bottom picture there, number 20 Colonial. We were the first people to move in 21 years ago, and we've taken joy in seeing how the neighborhood has developed into a very wholesome family atmosphere. And it's a safe place, and so I'm here to vouch for the group who have a petition. Over 40 people signed a petition. You said the neighbors would not be happy, and you're absolutely right. So we are opposed to this, but we need more information before I read what the opposition points are. I'm just curious, the businesses who ultimately go in there, will they have to have some licensing from someplace? It's like, do you guys do that licensing, or does somebody else do it? Or if we approve this, if this group approves it, does that end any restrictions on what could be put there?
Well, I think I'm hearing of a couple of questions in there.
Okay.
Is whatever, I think the first question was, whatever businesses are, become tenants or occupants in these commercial spaces, will they need to be licensed?
Yes.
And I think the answer to that question is, if the state or the town requires that the business be licensed, then the answer is yes. If there are no such licenses required, then the answer would be no.
Okay, so where does that request or that debate take place? In other words, let's say that somebody wants to put in a pot store.
Yeah.
We don't think that's going to happen, but just a good example, classical example.
Sure.
What did we use that to make a decision, whether it's people that-
Whatever board has authority over that particular licenser. It's certainly not this board, but I think the second part of your question is, if by virtue of this application, and if this board grants the variance, then does that negate all obligations to get licensed?
Yes.
The answer is no.
Okay.
All business licenses would still be fully in play. The applicant would have to satisfy all authorities.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
All right.
I just want to also add, by right, there's certain businesses that can go in there by our bylaw, which is termed by the bylaw, not by this board, so.
All right. Okay. So anyway, the neighbors have been upset for several weeks, and they came to the last meeting, but there wasn't time to hear their concerns. So they've asked me to raise some concerns with you, and frankly, some of it is kind of like an illegal ease, so I don't, not sure I understand all of it, but they've kind of elected me to make the presentation, if you will. And some of the information may be dated because we've gotten some new information tonight, but let's, I have some questions for you. Is it true that the petitioners are not the legal owners of the subject property?
I think the answer to that is yes.
Did you want to write them down and have-
We've got all this.
And then, go by them, and then you can have the applicant answer them for you? I don't think the board is for to answer your, you can rebuttal on it?
No, that's easy enough, no.
Yeah.
To me, I don't see a big deal with that.
If he uses the folder, we have the authorization.
Right. He has the authorization to apply.
Okay.
And I'm sure his purchase and sale agreement, the purchaser's land, is contingent upon him getting the okay for the building.
I understand. Okay. That's helpful.
So let's not get lost with any gobbledygook, per se.
Okay. The second point that the group raised, and remember now, they are amateurs living in the town, in that beautiful neighborhood, and so they don't always understand all these things, but they try to put their questions together. So the second one is, the petitioners' request for a variance from the applicable zoning laws, doesn't that violate the intent of the statute and pose a significant safety hazard? Anybody else?
I don't think that you're, are you asking this board, or are you asking the applicant to answer these questions? I'm just curious.
I guess we're asking the board.
You're asking the board to answer their questions?
Yeah. But your answer is no.
Requesting a variance is not a public hazard, no.
Okay. Another one is, the petitioners' request for a variance from the applicable zoning laws proposes a master plan, suitable for the- proposes a master plan unsuitable for the property and that it does not meet the 100-foot setback. Looks like you handled that, right? I heard that discussion. So that 100-foot variance has been approved by this group, or will be. Is that what you're saying?
No, no variance, nothing has been approved yet.
Thank you. All right.
Excuse me, can I interrupt you? In order to meet the 100-foot setback, nothing could be there because the lot isn't 100 feet wide. Okay? So without a variance, nothing could be granted there.
Okay.
Okay, because the lot is what, 91 feet wide? And the variance is 100 feet. So simple arithmetic says it's an eminent domain taking if there's not a variance granted.
Thank you. Another one, they want to know whether the petitioners' request for a variance from the applicable zoning laws includes a proposal to erect this structure that is aesthetically undesirable and not inconformly with the surrounding architecture, adversely affecting the market value of surrounding residential structures. Have you seen some of these pictures? The homes are beautiful, so the people who own them and their families are concerned. So one of the issues they raise is, is this going to severely change the culture of the neighborhood? So that's one of the concerns that's been raised. Especially since we don't know what's going to go in there. Let's see. Thank you. The last point was, like I said, this is a group of parents who didn't quite know what to ask, but let's take another stab at it. And this is the last one. Substantial equitable relief is available to the petitioners in the multiple available commercially zoned properties elsewhere on 114. So naturally, they're saying, gee, there's plenty of space other places. Why not have it someplace else? So those are the concerns. We have 40 signatures here. There's a lot of unrest in the neighborhood, and people frightened about how the character of the neighborhoods might change.
Understood.
Any questions, anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you for the thoughtful presentation.
My name is Lana Gill, and I live in 10 Colonial Avenue, first house on the left. So I will be directly affected by this building as I'll be looking at it. You know, I moved in six years ago, and at the beginning of the neighborhood, we have five children, you know, running around. There's neighborhood kids all over the place. You know, we really like how set back it is, the entrance. I don't believe the builder intended for something to go there that close to the curb. I really, really beg you for not to approve the 18 difference to the left of it. It's just, as John mentioned, it's such a beautiful neighborhood. It will just change the entrance. We used to have a beautiful sign there. I think it just got knocked down by the weather. It was right where the proposed, you know, 18 difference is. And it will just change the culture of the entrance with this building. It's a great community, you know, just, I spoke last time. We have such traffic issues. I don't think anybody even can foresee this, but I mentioned before, sometimes I have five or six cars in front of my house trying to make that dangerous left. There's that extra lane in the middle of people not using it. You know, the turning lane to the gas station, they are not using it appropriately. I'm just concerned, this is too dangerous, this is too big. It is unacceptable. It is not a place for this. I, you know, I'm kind of speaking out for everyone because we have either little kids or bigger kids who are trying, you know, learning how to drive, making that left. There's that gas station, you know, is one of the cheapest gas stations in towns. There's lines out, you know, every pump, there's always cars lining up trying to wait for it. From every single side, it will not change. Everybody wants gas from that gas station. I appreciate that this is proposed, and it looks, you know, maybe a little better for some people, but for us, it doesn't. There's, you know, there's a house right in the back of there that have kids, and they will hear the noise, they will hear the garbage, they will hear, you know, everything. They couldn't be here today. But I understand that the town, you know, might benefit from this because nothing else could go in, but why does something have to go in there? Because it's just not enough space. It is just too dangerous. I would like to see traffic study, you know, planning board, like Ellen mentioned, that all this needs to be approved. And even so, like, I'm just asking you guys not to approve it, and I would like for you to drive around and see how, even within six years that I moved there, how much more increase to the traffic this place is with the very street, with all, everything that's going on around us, with ways everybody's cutting through our neighborhood. There's constant, you know, movement, and this is just going to bring more issues that I'm foreseeing. I appreciate you here for us.
Hi, good evening, my name is Carolyn Casaldo. I also live on Colonial Avenue.
What's the address?
85 Colonial. I appreciate what Ellen said, that something should go there. Firstly, I just think the whole presentation with the different buildings, all those buildings have 100-foot setbacks, so they're not on top of the road like this building is going to be. Extremely visible. Again, I don't really, I think when you drive around other communities, I think the one thing, I've lived in North Andover for 30 years. The one thing that's disappointed me in our town is that I really don't think we always give permits and variances to things that really fit where they should be. Other communities that are countryish, like North Andover, they have buildings that fit appropriately and look, they fit into the community or the schematic. I think we have a lot of situations, especially in our area presently, that have been built, that really just, they weren't thought out. They could have been different design, or, you know, fit in a little bit more with the residential country-type look that I think North Andover should have. So that disappoints me a little bit. I think this looks, you know, again, it looks very cosmopolitan. This area is not cosmopolitan. There used to be a riding academy there, nice open space. All of that's gone now, too. So my disappointment is, in living in the town as long as I have, is that I just think we should try to keep it more aesthetically country-pleasing and not go to, you know, mix all these different styles in one area. It's just, I think it degrades the community, it diminishes the home values. And I guess most importantly, too, I'm concerned about the curb cuts. You've got the gas station with two huge curb cuts. You're going to have another curb cut coming out onto 114. Our road coming left, coming right. Across the street, there's an empty Girl Scout building, good-sized building. Something's going to go in there, too. So, I don't know, I hope that you can understand that all of that traffic merging into those lanes in 114 is, I think it's an issue. I don't think that, you know, I don't think it's smart. And I appreciate, you know, that you brought forth Elizabeth Grady. You know, I've worked in that industry. So Elizabeth Grady is going to bring an esthetician, a receptionist. These are all, right there, you probably have about five people that are going to park in those spots. They're going to work just in probably that business. So then you have hairstylists, how many spaces? We have 10 and two handicap. Those will be filled probably at least 50% or more by the employees of those two businesses. So then where is everyone else going to go? When the customers come in, where are they going to go? I don't know, I just think these are all things that we have to consider because we're trying to put something really aggressive on the spot that just, I don't think can handle it. And maybe we should just be more selective and be patient, and something else will come along that would better fit on that property. That's just, you know, what I would like to say.
Just so the record, there's open positions? If you're not, I mean, this is a volunteer, and you can always sign up for a planning board?
Well, I would like to do that, because that's just, I have to be honest. I've been in many different communities, in Sudbury and whatever, and those communities really tend to keep a theme. And it makes the whole Route 20 much more picturesque. It's not a bunch of mismatch of styles. You know, I'm sure you've all driven through communities like that. And I just think in our particular area, it's really become, it's, you know, I don't mind. I realize when I bought on Colonial Avenue that the opportunity for commercial growth was going to be there, but I was, you know, hoping that, you know, we would keep to a style, just like on Route 28 in Andover now. If you've driven down there, they put the country store in. That country store blends in beautiful there. It's landscaped, it looks residential. It's a beautiful addition to that neighborhood. I would have no problem with something like that. But this is, it's too cosmopolitan. And it's too large, and I just don't think it fits with the style of the community. I just really don't. And I think that as a town, we should really all be pro that. And, you know, make our town look the way we want it to. And I just think North Andover is more of a country community, in my opinion. And we are right near Harold Parker State Forest as well, so. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Judy Ferris, 31 Oxbow Circle. I have a number of points that I don't think have been brought up yet. And I do want to thank all of you guys for your time, because I do realize you're volunteers, and you have to kind of catch the flak from us citizens out here, trying to understand what's happening. And as John had said, we don't know this stuff, so we're trying to do our best to find something that will fit in this space. But so thank you for your time, because this is a huge time commitment that you put forth. Just a couple of observations, maybe a little bit redundant, but in this stretch of 114, and with the, just the town planning that's going on right now for our, what is that called?
Master plan.
The master plan. You know, when you look at that, and I've gone to those meetings, you know, there's, all those residents came out and they said what they want, you know, the look. And when you look at what's happening on our side of town, you know, maybe people don't think about that as part of North Andover because we're so close to the Middleton Line, I don't know. But there has been a change, and I can, just want to echo Carolyn's thing. There's that development that's, I don't know, their condominiums just kind of off the sideline.
Berry Farm?
Not the Berry Farm, like, those are huge, and the setback.
Merrimack condos?
Yeah.
Merrimack condos.
Yeah, the Merrimack condos. I mean, those are like right on the street.
So you can thank your state for that.
Yeah, exactly. I figured there was something on that, but that area, that's where we live, right? And so there's a change there compared to the rest of 114. And I think with that master plan and where we're at, we don't want to look like Danbury's, right? We, and I said this before, the last building kind of reminded me of 7-Eleven. I have to say, this is a bit of an improvement, but now I think it kind of looks like a candy store. So, you know, that's, again, just my personal opinion. I also don't think it fits with the site. I want to make a comment on the two side lots that are entered into our building, and I brought a copy of our protective covenants for the neighborhood. And Cormier was the builder of that development, and it was his last development that he built, and he has since passed away. But it was his intent, and I'm an original owner, so I've been in that community for 20 years. But when he built it, he wanted it to look a certain way, right? He built, he put in all the upgrades in those houses. He, it was this kind of last hurrah. And he asked all the residents that were buying the property to keep the green spaces open and cut and taken care of. And so those lots that are on either side, as you enter Colonial, those are meant to stay with the neighborhood. So they shouldn't be purchased and turned into some commercial development property, even though they're zoned that way. That was not his intent. We have our covenants that talk about the intent. And it scares me beyond belief to think that a business could come in here and take this gentleman's hard work and the effort that he put in to create this development and just change that after he has passed. So that's a little concerning, and he's not a personal friend of mine. I just, I can feel that, that was his last hurrah. And then on the same token, that was all his land, and he decided to create that lot, right? The lot, I believe, that doesn't meet the 100-foot setback. That's non-conforming. And that was a hardship, right? That, and I did a little bit of research on it. That was a self-created hardship that he created as he broke down. And as my, when I was reading this, and it's not necessarily North Andover, but just best practice, if a builder or a developer creates a self-created hardship, then they're not supposed to get variances. And so this applicant is buying a self-created hardship, and that transfers, that self-created hardship, as I understand it, transfers to whoever buys the property. So, again, I'm not an attorney, I'm just reading things on the web. I'm reading things from attorneys. So, sorry, I'm getting nervous, but anyways, I think that that's important, that if that's true, and I trust you guys are the experts in that, that if this builder created this non-conforming lot, and now the folks want to buy it and put something on it where they're asking for variances, they shouldn't be given a variance because it's a non-conforming lot, and it was purposely created to be a non-conforming lot. Then, these things may not be for you guys, but I think it's important to consider. You have a beauty salon, maybe, I don't know, pedicure, manicure place, places that are going to be using water. We're all septic in that area. There is no space for septic on this land. And as I understand it, the sewer lines that come out, that were put in there for the Poty Homes down the way, those are at capacity. So this is going to draw a lot of water. And again, I don't know that that's probably the planning board, I don't know. But it's just another issue that if this gets approved, then they're going to go, and they're going to ask again for more variances. And this is a posted-sized lot, and they're asking, that 100-foot setback is huge, I think, for what they're asking for. And then, just again, if they're going to build on this lot, where are those trucks going to go when they build? Where are they going to be? They're going to be on our street, which is going to cause more trouble for the turning. And again, I know that probably doesn't go into consideration for your decision straight on variances, but it's an issue. It's a public safety issue, and I don't think that this property meets that public safety. And then I also just, I just had a question. They have signs on the building, and if they decided to try to put one closer to the street so people could see it, that would then block our, more fully block our view of being able to turn? But they don't have that yet. And then I would just also had a question. Have you guys ever granted a variance of this size to a non-conforming lot? Like, has that been done in North Andover that you guys are aware of? If I didn't work full-time, I probably would have went and did the research, but I'm just curious.
I don't even know where to start.
So you have, you think you have?
You know what, for me, I can tell you how I have voted, and I've probably been on this board the longest.
You're the senior member.
So I look at each case individually, and I can't say, well, you know, it's not a black and white decision that I make.
Right.
So I look at each one individually, and if it has nothing to do with, well, I gave you 100 feet, I'm going to give you 101.
I was just curious if we, as a town, have ever made.
I can't answer again.
Yeah, I know.
It's possible.
I would probably say, you know, I don't know, I have no idea.
You could vote on vacation.
I went on vacation by one time in 25 years.
The other thing that I'll say is that, as, again, as I was reading up on this, I thought that the applicant that's applying for a variance has to show hardship. And I'm not quite sure what the hardship is in this applicant's case. So I'm not sure that that has been stated. I know they want to build something bigger, but I don't think that that's been said. So if you guys understand what the hardship is, please share it with me, because I'm kind of missing that.
It's not for us to determine, it's the applicant to determine, to tell us, so they can tell us.
But is that something you guys need to know before you vote, though? What the hardship is?
Well, I think it's awfully easy on its face. You can't build anything on this. So to the extent you put a doghouse on this, a four-by-four doghouse. So to the, to the extent you put a doghouse on this, a four-by-four doghouse.
Right.
It's going to need 100-foot variance.
Yeah.
You know, just, just to kind of be colloquial about it.
Right, right.
So is that, I mean, is, I, I would prefer the applicant to say that the hardship is the shape, I mean, in order to meet the requirement of a variance, you need to prove soil shape and topography. And those are the requirements of chapter eight or 10. Yeah, 40, 48, thank you.
The attorney in.
So it's up to the applicant to prove the hardship to us as a board, not for us to determine if we're.
Okay, all right. But that, so hardship is not one of the concerns that you.
Absolutely, they're applying for a variance, they have to prove to us it's a hardship.
Okay, all right, okay. And then, yeah, I don't know, I think I skipped out, but. So again, so I just, yeah. So thank you again for your time, but I do think that, that they're trying to, I think I saw this at the Berry Street Development, it's just way too big for this lot, whatever. It's, I just don't, I just, I'm just not understanding why, with all the other properties that's available, with all the other vacant lots, why we have to try to give this 100-foot variance? And I, and I don't understand, because I was trying to look at the pictures back there, what the changes were on this, the side and the back variances. It sounds like maybe those have gone away, but I'm kind of finding that hard to believe that the set, they're meeting the setback for the, the back of the development, but, but that's it. So, thank you. Sorry.
I just have a question. Who'd you say was the developer?
Cormier. I don't know if he still owns that land, but he was the original owner of the land.
Aurel.
Or, yeah, Aurel, yeah. So, and I did bring our covenants, but.
Are they expired?
Nope, they have 10 more years on them.
Really?
Yeah, he, I mean, he was really.
He did it for 30 years?
He, he was really serious, and that's what I say, he was really serious about this development and maintaining the look of it and.
That's not who owned the property originally. The owner who owns the property now.
Now, right.
Received it from somebody else.
Yeah.
Who inherited it from somebody else. So this is already passed, this property has already passed hand from the developer. The developer truly did own this.
This is not the developer's property.
And originally?
You're mistaken.
No, no, I didn't say it was for sure. I said if it was.
It's not the property on the corner. It's a property on the.
No, I understand that, a, something I was trying to.
Their family still owns. This is adjacent to that. It's not, it was not part of the original.
So, so I guess my question would be who created the non-conforming lot? Right? But it is, so it was, it is a non-conforming lot that was created by somebody, whether it was the.
The lots were created before zoning, so zoning made it non-conforming.
It's a grandfathered lot and there was a building on it in 1981 that was torn down by, by the personnel. So there was a building on that lot.
How big was that building?
Uh, it was, it was the size of a house.
That predates.
From 1981, though.
Right, can't, I can't comment on that.
It was before I was born.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Catherine Kendrick and I live on 20 Colonial Avenue. And one of the, I echo everything that everybody else has said. I think that this is totally unacceptable in terms of the parking and the way the building looks and what they're trying to do. But one thing that really hasn't been stressed is safety. I know when I come home from work every single night and I'm coming around 6:00 PM and I'm going past that gas station, I cannot tell you how many times I've almost been hit because the cars are going so fast behind me and then I'm trying to take that right turn. And now I'm thinking, there's little kids in the neighborhood, plus so many people using that right turn, cars coming in so many directions. And then I just think if you have all these people parked there trying to get in and out of that lot, that it's going to just add to safety concerns in the area and I'm afraid, you know, accidents. There's no light there. There, there's no light to control any of the traffic and it's a very congested area because people use that as a pass-through when they're trying to go to work in the morning and when they're coming, coming home at night. And so I just don't know if the impact of the kind of traffic that's going to be created in that area has been considered thoroughly. I think the area is becoming much too commercial with residential property abutting there. So anyway, thank you for considering those thoughts.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Kick it back to the applicant, is there anything you'd like to address? Please come on up to the podium, please.
There was a question about the scale of the building and several times comments made about the building is too large. And I understand the concerns and I understand why the neighbors would be concerned. I took a moment during the testimony to count the tiles in the ceiling, okay? We're about 28 feet wide across in this room and we're about 35 feet long. So to give you an idea of scale, this space here, this retail space, is about the size of this room.
To, to put the issue of scale in context, that retail space that we're talking about is the size of this room. So I just wanted to point that out.
One, one side, right?
One side.
But when you put something like this where you can't build anything, that it's not appropriate for the size of this building. I understand it's a small, that we all sit in here, but it's just not far enough from the road. That area is so dangerous when you turn and the gas station, I cannot imagine another turn into that space. I, it's just not feasible. That, I just have to comment on that one more time.
So can, can I ask a question about that? And, yeah. So you have your, if you put up the, the blueprint, the, the other one, not the design.
This one?
Not this, please? So how far is the lot line from the road? You have an easement of what?
The lot line, oh, here?
Yep.
I'd say about 12 feet.
And then how far is the first spot from the lot line? Number one.
Right here?
Yes.
Just another five feet.
So approximately 20 feet from the road that first parking spot's going to be from 114?
Yeah.
So, so that lot line is how far from the road?
This, I said, about 12 feet. Yeah, approximately. If you look up there, see the 18?
Yep.
Versus that space, you know, 12 to 15 feet.
From the active 114?
From where the pavement.
Yeah, okay.
What about to Colonial Ave? Do we know, do you know what it, the distance is from where, roughly, I guess, where yard lot line is to where Colonial Ave is?
That little lot on the side?
I think it's about 70 feet more from there to Colonial. And the road isn't there, but it's.
Just with regard to the requirement or the hardship, hardship is due to the shape of the lot. You know, we have soil shape and topography. Obviously, you can't comply with zoning with the lot shape the way it is. So that's the hardship. It's not self-created. The zoning superimposed upon this property created the hardship. And we have to reiterate, this isn't a residential lot, it's a commercial, it's business zoned. So.
When was the lot changed? When was that changed, the?
The zoning? I don't know.
Eighties.
Somewhere in the eighties.
Eighty-six?
I think so. But it was, you know, before that, it was residential down there. And then the town put in the business zone. So that, that's what it is and that's what's being proposed. It's just a matter of that, because of the shape of the lot, we can't meet the requirements of zoning. And that's the hardship. It's not self-created hardship, it's a hardship created by this superposition, imposition of zoning upon the area.
Can I just, I'm a little bit. I'm just thinking now about this, the lot and the parking. So as someone said before, because I drive this all the time myself, because clearly I live on Colonial, when you're coming down 114, you're going at least, I don't know, 35, 40 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, maybe, 35, 35. But even so, there's always someone behind you, right? So then you put your blinker on, you, in fact, we have to play the blinker game because you can't put your blinker on before you get to the gas station because then people think you're going into the gas station. So you have to wait, put the blinker on quick, go into Colonial. So when we're pulling into this parking lot now, think about this, there's people coming out of the gas station potentially. You've got that to deal with. And then you've got someone behind you and then all of a sudden you're going to make a right turn and you're five feet, you're going to be into a parking spot? That's never going to work because you're going too fast when you pull into that parking lot. Because when I pull into Colonial, I have to put my brake on to cut the speed that I'm traveling at on 114. So if you really have someone look at that, that's extremely dangerous because you are never going to get into that parking lot in a slow, safe speed. It's impossible because you have people behind you that are going 35 miles an hour or 45. I mean, seriously. So that's, that's a real issue and that's way too close. Because I know, like I was saying, when I pull into my street, I literally have to put the, put the brake on immediately so that I'm safe for Lana's children and whoever is right there. So I think that's a real consideration with that.
Last comment, please.
Okay, sorry. So, I think it was you asked about how far away it was. But, so we have an aerial shot that, I don't know if this was presented to the board, but it shows.
Sure, show Alexander.
I'll take a look at it.
It shows where, where their, when their initial plan was, but, so there are a lot here and then this is Colonial. So it's not, and then there's, I don't know if they're measuring from this dirt or where their property line probably starts, but when we make our turns, we are out to the dirt to, to be able to, to get around already.
Thank you.
If that helps.
It does, thank you.
So I didn't really, I didn't see the parking before.
So it's just a one-way in and one-way out? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Unless you're going over grass. And the accessible spot is a van?
Is it a van accessible spot?
Yeah.
Yeah. Eight, the spate, spot right next to eight, right? So it's just one accessible spot?
Yeah.
And then I thought of another question, but did you say there were stairs going up? I can't, I'm not supposed to ask them a question, right? There are stairs going up to the second story of this building?
There are, yeah.
So is that potentially, potentially?
I think that there, I think that we could probably try to conjure a problem with every bit of this application and I am loathe to consider this, the issue, an issue about internal stairs.
Well, I'm just saying like that, is that potentially?
I'm certain that the building inspector would have every, every word and the last word on.
But it doesn't count a square footage for this particular building because.
The, the building is not, not necessarily accurately outlined there, but the building is, is, you know, 65 by 40 is the square footage of the structure.
Yeah.
So how the applicant intends to use the interior of the structure, how, where the demising walls go, where the vertical penetrations go, where the plumbing goes, that's going to be up to the applicant and up to the building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, it is hard to.
Certainly, certainly not this board.
It's hard to tell from this, how wide of an entrance and exit that is going to be because I think, and it is a 45 mile an hour road, but.
And every, every car that drives down 114 has the exact same challenge pulling into every driveway, every road or, or every commercial establishment. So once again, speaking for myself, I am like not entirely persuaded that this is so extraordinarily dangerous. This is an entrance on a, on a state road where the speed limit is 40, 45, 50 miles an hour. And it's no different than the rest of the 114 corridor.
Yeah, what is different? And I, and, and I respect your, your view, but what's different to ours is that we have this massive Berry Street development that you guys could not take into consideration the, the traffic, that all those people are now doing exactly what I was here saying was going to happen. They're all cutting through our neighborhood, which we, which makes it hard for us. So that's what's different about this Colonial, right? We're trying to exit.
So there's also, there's also some tension going on between, some people are speaking about the master planning effort and what the town is, is, you know, what it's endeavoring to create up and down 114, not just 114, but around the town.
Around the town.
And the buzzword today is nodes. They want nodes of commercial development. They don't necessarily want nodes stretched, they don't want commercial development stretched all the way up and down 114 or all the way up and down Salem Street or all the way up and down Main Street. What they're seeking to these days is a node. And what we're, what is developing, unfortunately for this neighborhood, what is developing is primes there, the sub-shops there, the car shops there, Stonewall is there, that's the right name of the development. So what's happening unfortunately for Colonial is this intersection is becoming a commercial node, which is precisely what today's planners are trying to create. So I don't know a way around it. If we, if you say, we don't want a commercial node at the end of our road, which I 100% get, I wouldn't either, quite frankly, but it's what is being developed. It's what's organically occurring.
What?
Along with what the planners are trying to create. So either we go with what the, we can adopt what the planners are suggesting occur or we stretch it out and the planners say, well, that's not what we're supposed to be endeavoring to. We don't want a commercial thing here and a commercial thing there. Everybody's got to drive all around creation. The planners want folks to come to an area, take care of their business and then go home.
That's not going to happen in that area because you can't cross 114 on foot because it's a 45 mile an hour road.
Understood, we're not talking about a pedestrian walkway here.
But in any case, the only thing I was going to say was what's different, I think, about Colonial Avenue is that other areas where you have people coming in and out, it's, there's, there's not as many turning points, right? We have, we have the Berry Street people coming in to take a left. We have the gas station that has lots of cars coming out and then you'd have this development, plus you have us. You know, I don't think there's another development like that on 114 that has so many traffic considerations that are coming. And I understand that you don't understand it, you don't see it as a concern. We see it because we live there and I can certainly understand it, that, that you don't see that. If you don't live there, you don't care, it doesn't, you know, like, it doesn't impact you, right? Unless you're cutting through our neighborhood, then you think, oh, this is really convenient. But.
The logical extension of the argument is let's not have a curb cut, let's not have a parking lot, let's not have a structure, let's not develop the parcel, which is also another argument that I 100% understand. Then my suggestion is somebody who doesn't want this developed should acquire the property and preserve it.
Right, well, I think that the, the previous owner that moved out, I think a year ago, he was, he could have bought it years ago, but.
Missed opportunity.
Exactly. He kicked himself as soon as, as soon as he lost.
So here we are.
And I'm actually not against necessarily building on that, I just, I think it's, I think it's.
You're not against building on that lot?
No, no, not, I'm not, you can ask the emails and the texts of people.
Give me a break, come on.
Honest to God.
You've been up here for half an hour.
Honest to God, it's a scale.
You've given every excuse in the world not to build that thing and you're telling us you don't really care?
Honest to God, you can ask, you can ask.
You don't even live in that thing. Do you live on Boston Street, right?
No, I live right in the neighborhood.
My apologies. Because I thought you told me you lived on Boston Street.
No, I live on, I'm in circle.
When they wanted to build Berry Street, they told me they were going to be going, okay, you complained about the traffic going up Boston Street.
Well, it's a cut through from Colonial Ave.
I remember the argument well.
But that wasn't my argument for that either, that was other people's.
Well, let's not get into that, that's all we built, all right?
But no, but I, honest to God, because I'm like, okay, fine, build something that, I said last meeting, build something that looks like a house that fits into the development, I would be all for that.
Why don't the neighbors, if they're so concerned about this building, why don't you neighbors get together and buy the land?
Well, maybe we will after, if these variants doesn't get proved.
I'll make a motion that we continue this for 30 days, and I give you an option to buy the land.
Why are you mad at me?
I'm not mad at you, but I mean, we're just going along with the London arguments here. Okay, and when you come up and say that you don't care, but goes on the line, you've been arguing for 30 minutes to stop it.
Alan, no, this particular, don't, don't take my words out. This, this scope, this size, is what, that I don't agree with. If it was one storefront for a beauty salon, that looked like a house, I would be fine.
What else?
You don't believe me, but honest to God, you can read my emails, and I said, because I said, because this is exactly what I said, was be careful what you wish for, because look what happened to Berry Street. Berry Street had the residents on the outside of the street, there were proposals that came forward for retirement communities, two of them that I know of, and the residents over there shot it down, and now, look, look what happened. So that was my take, so be careful what you wish for.
Who voted no on Berry Street?
You did, I know, exactly.
Who voted no on Berry Street?
I would have been a no vote, too.
Then you were new, I think that might have been your first.
No, I was here for quite a while.
I thought that was what your first one was.
I was here for quite a while.
Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's the end of public comment.
I can just add one little thing to this.
If, if it's an addition.
Yeah. We've been there for 17 years at this present location, and we're just taking our clientele. So we're not in a situation where we don't know what's going to happen here. We're just taking our existing clientele, and like my wife reiterated in the last meeting, we do one person at a time. It's me and my wife working there, a one-part-time person. This is sounding like we're going to be sitting there contributing to about, you know, 50% of the traffic on 114. We'll be lucky if we contribute to point zero zero one. It's basically going to be a customer being worked on. When they're done, the next customer's there. When they're done, the next customer's there. I'm sure everyone here is.
No, thank you, no, thank you. The comments will be made one at a time.
Yeah, and Elizabeth Grady is just one person who's asking to be there. My wife still has all the people she originally mentioned the last time. So I just want to just get everybody to understand that it's, it's just one person at a time, coming in, getting their hair done, and leaving. We can't service 15 people with two hands. And all we have is just two people, me and my wife, and a part-time person working there. And we can only do one person at a time.
Understood.
I just want to make that a little bit clear, so.
Thank you for that. All right. Shall we, is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
No. A motion's made, Alan?
I make a motion to close the public comment.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous, public comment is closed. Now there'll be deliberations of the board. Would anyone care to begin?
I'd like to say something. I think it's pretty evident, which, the way I'm going to vote on this, right? I mean, we don't got to be genius to figure that out, okay? However, to address your concern about you doing one client at a time, do you plan on working forever? Okay, what happens when you retire? Okay, what's going to happen to that place now?
Well, my, my wife.
Yeah, but don't give the argument, okay? Okay, that you're going to be one guy at a time, and you're going to do this. Because you're not going to work there the rest of your life.
Redirect a little bit, Alan, this, this is just a deliberation of the board. If we had any questions for the gallery or the applicant, that, that unfortunately passed.
When he says he's going to do one hair at a time, and two hairs at a time, or whatever, that's fine as long as he's in possession of his business. When he gets done with his business, when God willing, all day shit, and you want to retire, and you start collecting social security, what happens ultimately now? You going to knock it down?
No.
No, apparently not, right? You going to sell it, rent it out? So what potentially could not be a building, or a use, as you described. It could be a lot more. Correct?
Well, again, again, Alan, we're not asking, we're not asking questions of the gallery or the applicant anymore.
So Alan.
Certainly, certainly a question that you could pose to the rest of the board.
So if you look at the size of this room, if there, what you're saying is, there's a potential for a five-seat or six-seat, you know, salon, which has that traffic, which it could be. So your argument might be, there could be the potential for additional seats. Right now, before us, is what we have to look at.
I agree, but I just want to address the applicant.
So you just want it to be known?
I just want it to be known that I'm not a fool, that you're not going to be there forever.
Alan, the board.
The flip side of that is, to intensify the usage.
But you're right, we're going to vote on what's looking at us today.
Correct.
I agree with that.
To, to address the question perhaps sideways a little bit, if you're trying to increase the intensity of this usage, if you want to go from a four-chair salon to an eight-chair salon, there's not parking available for it. So a new user wouldn't be able to make that change.
I'm saying for some other use of the building.
Yep.
Some other use.
Yep.
And I understand that they're restricted by the parking that's available.
Yep.
I get that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Jacobs.
I, I deal with 114 all the time, just like everybody else, and I, I go to the gas station.
You go to that gas station? Honest to God.
I drive in the opposite direction to go to that gas station sometimes.
Do you put the blinker on when you go into the gas station?
I do, and I blaze into that thing, because I'm going.
Hot.
35 miles an hour.
35 miles an hour, yes. Of course, my son is not with me. And I, I understand, I think, the concern of, of the traffic, and the going in and the going out. And I also do sit here and look at what we're looking at today, being one customer at a time. But I think one of the problems we enter is sometimes, as unfortunately agreeing with Alan. Trust me, I'll choke myself later.
I know, I know.
Is the concern of where we're going future-wise. And that can be increased traffic. I mean, essentially, you can have 11 people coming in and out at one time. I'm not sure if the distance between Colonial Ave along, and I understand the concern they're having. They do have a lot going on in this one little chunk. And that I think does create a difference from where you're at on the rest of 114. Because 114, not a lot of spots on 114 have this Berry Farm along with the car place, along with another retail place, along with the gas station, along with. So I think that's, I would be on the fence until I open my mouth for a vote.
Do you really think this is going to increase the traffic?
You know what, I will say, I will say this to you, I will say this to you. Do I think right now it will increase the traffic? Maybe not. Maybe not, I mean, if you want to look at exactly how it is right now in front of us, one person at a time, so maybe you have two cars in there, I don't know what Elizabeth Grady does.
They suck last month's.
Okay. I don't know how you know that.
I know Jack Walsh.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, leaves in Boston.
I don't know. I don't know.
So here's my concern, is it going to increase traffic at a percentage that would be like, oh, wow, look at that building, look at, now I have a backup? No, but this building here, that building here, this building, the, the amount of, you know, piece, nodes, I should call them, does increase it. My issue is, everything's just so close to 114, and it, it just, you know, your spot's 20 feet from the road, you have a car 20 feet from the road. I mean, it, it's, it's designed to have, even though, yes, I understand, that lot is not going to be able to fit anything in compliance.
But could it be moved back?
Well, then, that's the same choice that we had to make with Berry Farms, which is, what do you try to achieve? If you move, if you move close to the road, at Berry Farms, if you move the development closer to the road, you get to salvage an awful lot of open space in back. If you take it away from the road, then you eliminate the open space in back. So the same thing is true in this case, which is, I think, the, the whole thing could move back. We could, we could say that, let's put it right on the, you know, right on the lot line.
On nothing right on the lot.
On the real lot line, I know, just being dramatic here, just, just going to illustrate the point. Put it all the way back on the lot line, that will get the traffic away from, or the, you'll have more room to turn into the parking lot, it will get the building off of 114, move it back a little bit. So there are absolutely virtues to moving it back, and I don't sit here in opposition to exploring that concept. I have a sneaking suspicion, however, that the neighborhood, I don't, I can't speak for them, but my, but my experience tells me that if the board suggested to move this thing back, then we would have a similar sense of disappointment, frustration, and opposition to the project. It's just at a different location, the reason will be, it's too close to leave water behind.
But the building, the building could be smaller. I understand that maybe for this applicant, that economically does not work, but it is very possible that this piece of land could have a one-building, smaller function, that does blend in a little bit more with the surrounding area.
I agree with you.
I mean, not, if I lived on Colonial, I don't know how happy I'd be about that. But, I mean, so it's not saying that the lot is useless, but it could be a smaller.
Is this the best fit for this lot?
And I don't think.
Is what you need to ask yourself.
I think, I think the applicant has tried to address the neighbor's concern by planning a whole roll of evidences behind it.
Because they have to, Alan.
Whatever the reason being, he's trying to accommodate some, some level of discretion or secrecy of, so no one's looking at a building.
Because by, by our bylaw requires them to have to, it's not done out of, it's done.
Out of the goodness of, out of the goodness of the.
It's done as requirement, not as like, you know what, hey, I'm going to put this there because I want to do some screening. It's a requirement of our bylaw.
Well, it's also one checkmark off of a list between the luck, the traffic, the size, the parking.
Can I ask you people something?
Us people? You can ask this people anything you want.
We all drive down 114, right?
I live right down 114.
It is a busy road.
It is a busy road.
All right, okay, and if you got to pull into it, sometimes I got to wait 5, 10 minutes to get into it because of the traffic?
It depends, I mean, if I'm going right, I just blaze into the gas station. Because, you know, the one behind me is going to nail me.
Something is telling me that maybe I'm, I'm on the run 114 here.
It is always busy, it is always busy. Other developments have created, Berry Farm, have created issues, which some of us do not like.
I guess. Anyways, all said, get laid.
Well, I'm, I'm, I might have to choke myself on this a little bit later.
I'll help you later.
Alexandria, but I'm, I'm aligned with Alan on the, on the concept of, of this thing. I, I don't find it to be offensively masked. Could it, could it be smaller? Yes, the, the example I used earlier was a, was a doghouse. You could put a doghouse there, and we would still need an extraordinary number and degree of variance. That being the case, what can go here? What we have is an applicant who has a business, a business plan, or at least a business concept, to put a business next to a business in a business district on a, on State Route 114. Conceptually, I have a lot of trouble poking holes in that. So what am I, what am I left with? I'm left with some very, very well-articulated concerns that traffic, there will be accretion traffic. And while I am also aligned with the folks who say that this single development with 12 parking spaces and 23, 2,360 square feet of space, is that going to change the dynamic on 114 to make things more, more or less safe on a macro level? No, it's not. But I'm also perfectly aligned with this building, and then another building, and another building, and then a huge building, and then another building, that absolutely changes the dynamic. And I don't know that there's a solution to that, other than the master planning and improvements to 114, to the extent that this community one day stands up and tells me what it wants to be when it grows up. I don't say grow pejoratively, I say that as this community ages, what does it want to be? We're currently a town of about 30 square miles, and about 30,000 people. Do we want to be a town of 60,000 people? If so, then let's plan for it. Show me residential development that will get us to 60,000 people. Do we want to be a town that remains at 30,000 people? Do we not want more density? Do we not want more people? If the interest of that is, yeah, I want to stay at 30,000, 30,000-person population, then let's zone for it. Let's, stop building residential properties. Let's stop developing commercial properties. Until the day comes that this community says, let's stop developing, I'm forced to consider these things. And this is, as I said, as I opened with, not offensive to me. Do I wish that this were, you know, I don't know, red brick or a, or a white colonial-looking salon? Maybe, but I don't think that that's, that's not the style of this particular salon. It's not the branding that this salon is trying to put forward. So, and it's not necessarily my position, if I were on the planning board, then perhaps that would be my position. Do I take a look at this, and do I blanch in horror at the appearance of it? No, I don't. Do I, do I blanch at the internally lit signs? Yes, Alan, I do as well. Do I blanch at a sign on, on each side? No, I don't, but again, that's not necessarily my, my purview. I will leave that to the people who study this kind of stuff, and appreciate the, the effects of it, and know what the norms are, rather than just my knee-jerk gut reactions. So to the extent that the remainder of this board is interested in what, where, the way that I'm thinking, and wants to probe it, poke it, or kick it to the side, you know, this is, this is absolutely the time, because the board is deliberating about this application. So I guess there ends my thoughts, and Ms. Jacobs has something she's dying to say.
I get their branding, and I understand that, but I think, I think you have to find more compromise. Yes, I get it, you're asking the applicant to do more, but they're also kind of the one wanting something, which requires a little bit more compromise on their end. And I do think that they can still keep with the branding and the front glass windows, but not, but make it look like it does fit in. I mean, if this was in downtown North Andover, go down the street, there's one, I think, right there. So that would fit perfectly. That's not where it is, and I understand that where we are on 114.
Alex, Alex, do you know who the rebuttal is to the right?
What?
The rebuttal to the right of this project here, right?
The gas station.
Right, with a big sign.
I wasn't here for that, I don't even think I was born when that got put on.
The sign of the gas station is here.
I wasn't born when that got put on.
You're not inventing the wheel there, the gas sta, unless we ask the gas station to close, the gas station's going to stay.
And you know, just like Berry Farms I wouldn't have been for, I probably wouldn't have been for that big huge sign, even though I would still get their gas.
And you get gas, yeah.
I do get.
Did you look at the signs and see how much the gas cost?
No, I just always know it's the cheapest. But I do think it can fit in, and I, I understand the gas station is there. That's something that's been there, that's something that was.
And it's not going away.
And I get that, but that does not mean that, oh, you have a cut, let's just cut it deeper. I mean, stop the bleeding somewhere.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Well, the only thing is, if, if we're at a, at a place where we want to request something of the applicant, then certainly this is the time, otherwise it's time for a vote. But if it's time for a vote, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, you know, if, we always have to move in the affirmative. I'm uncomfortable with a plan suggesting, you know, that the proposed, proposed building is a four-chair salon with 1,180 gross square feet of retail. Particularly in the context that the first plan we were given actually broke it out and said that it was a 2,700-square-foot building with 1,200 salon and 1,500 of office. So if, if we were voting, I would certainly ask for a new plan indicating the entirety of the square footage of the building. Which, now that I'm looking at the other plan, I would, I would argue similarly with Alan, that the applicant has listened to the concerns last time, which were plentiful, and the applicant has taken very concrete steps to address the building is smaller, the part, there is no longer, this, the first plan, as the folks may or may not recall, had a parking lot on the right-hand side, and then there was pavement all the way around the building. So there were actually two sets of curb cuts, which was something that was brought up tonight, which was certainly objected to, and the applicant, in the intervening months, has listened to that concern and redesigned. So they have shrunk the building, they have shrunk the impermeable surface, they have reduced the number of curb cuts, they have actively gone to the fire department to make sure that there are no concerns with the public safety access there. They did make aesthetic changes, they may not be changes that everybody, you know, embraces, but the applicant was certainly listening. So that's just, I guess, an add-on point that nobody cares about.
Do we know if the letter from the fire department is based off of the old one or the new one?
The new one.
The new one? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, any final thoughts?
Nope.
It's hard to, have you marked that up for a motion?
I have.
For a motion?
I have.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the project as presented.
So we're closed, right? So.
Oh, you want to close the hearing first? I make a motion to close the, the, what do you want to vote? The discussion of the board?
All second. All right, the motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Universal aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the application presented to us of Connie and Nicholas.
Vigatos.
Vigatos, sorry, at property 117, 117 Turnpike Street. Vigatos, sorry, at property 117, 117 Turnpike Street, 111, in North Andover, Mass, to grant the variance listed under section 4.131, general business, for a area required is 25,000 square feet, provided is 15,000 sweets, 15,000 square feet. So that is a release, a release of 10,000 squishy feet. I'm sorry, I need a coffee. Frontage is not of, so the front setback is required 100 feet, provided is 26 with a relief of 74. Left-side setback is required is 40 and provided is 18, so a relief of 22 feet. The rear setback required is 50, proposed is 36, so that's a relief of 14. I'm gonna reference plans dated by Christensen and Sergi on revised 5/118, revised 5/718. The landscaping, landscaping plan, date 5/118. Architects Plan 1 and the, the second one with the square foot, and the various materials submitted by planning and the applicant, with the condition that this plan gets revised to show the actual square foot of 2,360, which was proposed. Anyone second that?
I second that.
Unless there's any other conditions that you see there or anything that I missed.
Any other conditions? Was there a second?
I second that.
Yep, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. Variance passes. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is the petition of serious development for a property at 562 Boxford Street.
Just to let you know, this is going in front of the planning board as well. So this, this application would be gonna, you'd check on this, on the.
On the website.
On the website. You'll see it in the planning board as well.
There's, there's one more on the board. Oh, there could be.
Mr. Christensen, you're here for this one too?
I am.
With a pleasure.
Thank you.
Oh, I love new material.
I will never come in front of this board so long as you are on there, ever.
Skin crawl.
The record.
Philip Christensen, Christensen and Sergi. This is for a project on Boxford Street. And we're here before, we needed a variance from the Board of Health, also from Conservation. I've given you this extra little plan here, which is a copy of what's on the board over here. And just to explain what the other variances are. We did get the variance from the Board of Health a month ago. We do not yet have a written letter on that. It will be coming. We have another meeting with Conservation tomorrow night, just as far as a replanting area is concerned, but they voted on the variances from Conservation regulations as well. On the plan that I just gave you, in green is the existing house on the property. Behind that, above it, you'll see a dotted area, which is the existing leach field. And the new house is in red. Proposed leach field is behind the house. You'll see three lines for that. Now, that needed a variance because the Board of Health, the North Andover, says you have to be 100 feet from wetlands with the septic. Title V, the state rules, is only 50 feet. So the Board of Health did grant us that variance. With regard to the Conservation Commission, we have the wetlands line shown here. They have those little flag numbers. If you look at flag A, 145A, that was about six feet farther to the east when we originally did the line. Jennifer moved it that way. By moving it six feet, we had to move the building over. There's two offsets to be concerned with here. The normal offset from wetlands is a 25-foot non-disturbance and then a 50-foot no-build. But then also, there's a vernal pool within this wetland, so that increases the non-disturbance zone to 50 feet and the no-build zone to 75 feet. So one of the things Conservation has done is allow us to, you see the NBZ on that red line? That's the no-build zone. They're allowing us to build the house within what they consider to be a no-build zone for the vernal pool, but they're requiring us to be 50 feet from the wetlands. That's the no-disturbed zone. For the vernal pool, it gets a little confusing, but the no-disturbed zone for the vernal pool is 50 feet. The no-build zone is 75 feet. But the no-build zone for the wetlands is 50 feet and the non-disturbance is 25 feet. In any case, Conservation's saying, look, we're letting you go closer to the vernal pool than we ordinarily do, but we don't want you to bring that house back any farther. The end result is, instead of having 30 feet for an offset from the property line, we're down to 16 feet. And that's what's shown on the variance plan we submitted. So we have an existing lot, which doesn't comply with the present two-acre zoning, and we need that sideline offset reduction in order to comply with all of Conservation's requirements.
On the left-hand sideline, that's what, is 16, 16 feet from the lot line?
Yes.
16.5.
Somebody called?
No.
So as I said, Conservation is going to approve this. Board of Health has approved it, and now we look to you folks to approve it.
So you're now gonna ask, how big is the new home as opposed to the existing?
The existing home is probably, you know, I don't even know if there's a second floor there or not.
There's no second floor.
You've been in there.
No, no, I drive by him.
Okay.
You say 12?
Not even, I don't think, no.
The tiny little, tiny little shack, right.
And by the way, the septic system is for a three-bedroom. That's all we can put in here. That's all we can fit. So the house is restricted to a three-bedroom. So it's approximately 2,400 square feet.
That's a 2,400 square foot one?
So you have all the approvals but us, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Not all signed.
That's.
I accept Mr. Christensen's approval. He's a gentleman. Look at that face.
It's tough getting a letter out of Board of Health. I don't know why, but.
So are you allowed to put some screenage between the two properties? Or is there, is there green there anyways? I mean, because it is some, close to the neighbors.
There's trees that have been planted along, along the lot next door. But on this lot, no. They can easily be planted there, but there's nothing there now. There's an evergreen planted along the lot line of the other property.
So is there, is there, is there no way to increase? I mean, the, I mean, in the context of this relatively enormous lot, to, I appreciate that the building is, you know, cornered by wetlands, but is there, is there not some way to offer greater setback? With the Santayani property? That 16 and 1/2 feet is just so narrow that it catches, it's hard not, for it to not catch attention.
Yeah. You know, if you slid the house forward a bit, you slide along that ND zone, the no-disturbed zone there, you could get a little bit farther away, but you could only come forward maybe five feet, I think, that's.
Front setback right now is 35, so yours is 30.
So I don't think sliding along there five feet forward's gonna make any difference. You know, you look at, say, taking this house and rotating the house a bit, but then the diagonal of the house winds up being as close to the property line as the, as it is now. You know, if you slid it forward and rotated it somewhat, it's tough. You know, just with all of those, particularly that vernal pool. If that vernal pool wasn't in there, and I don't know, I guess it's an ephemeral pool. It's not even a vernal pool, but you don't have much room other than to turn the house sideways entirely. And then you really, you know, I don't think you have a house that's in keeping with the neighborhood. I mean, you go out there, everybody's the same, parallel to the street, colonial houses. You know, you put in an oddball, it doesn't help the neighborhood at all.
I'm not, so I'm speaking largely of ignorance here because I don't necessarily, I don't think I have a rendering to see what the. You do? So that, so the part of the home that is closest, so the 16 and 1/2 feet away, that is the garage.
Yes.
So what line are you restricted in to put the footprint of the house?
Excuse me?
What color, can you put the footprint of the house? I mean, you can't put it over to where the previous, push it over?
No, you can't build on the, Conservation will not allow that.
Which one, the red NDZ?
Yes, NDZ, right. Can't go beyond that. Yeah, there's also an existing well where the well is shown on this lot. And we really need the well there. As you can see, that's just 100 feet from the septic system.
But there's no tub water out there?
No. It stops at, you know, the new subdivision, Wellington Way, which is just east of here, and then it's down on Duncan Drive the other way. So there's no water goes by this lot.
Because my daughter lives on Brookview and she has, but I think she gets.
It came in Brookview from the back of Duncan Drive.
Oh, okay.
Came in Brookview, and then Bob Messina extended it.
All right.
Up. Into Wellington Way, and that was it. That's as far as it went.
So thanks to Ms. Jacobs, I have the rendering. I have some confusion. It may not be relevant, but I at least wanna get it straight. According to the, this rendering, the garage doors you're entering, the garage doors appear to be here on the rendering, and the driveway is going, so the garage doors are here.
Yes, we have to change it. With 16 feet, when we started out, we were trying to stay right here. Come in that way.
So is everything on the rendering the same except the doors are now just in the front of it versus the side? Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard? Seeing and hearing none.
At least it'll be shorter.
Not necessarily.
Any final words?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to close, to close the hearing.
Public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
Second motion?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Now the board may deliberate, shall deliberate.
Do we need a motion to deliberate?
No.
No, no, sir.
My feeling is this is almost a no-brainer. It's a little decrepit cottage there, okay? And what they're doing is improving the neighborhood. And I know it's very close to the side setback. But with the topography of the land and the way the Conservation works, there's nothing else the man can do. He's gone through all the appropriate agencies, boards, whatever. I think putting a nice decent house instead of the vacant piece, the vacant property that's there is a boost to the town, notwithstanding the extra tax revenue the town would gain by taxing a new house versus a deo shack.
Always thinking about the town.
Thinking about the town, the education of your kids, right? For the school department.
Keep it going.
Board have any concerns about traffic?
Actually, you know what? That part of, that part of Salem Street's getting very dangerous.
Because there were guys that you know they're on Boxford Street.
All right, stop it.
I'm okay with the traffic as of right now. Parking seems to be okay.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Any comments? Nothing percolating. Is there a motion, Madam Vice Chair?
I will make a motion to grant the variance located on 562 Boxford Street, map 10, oh geez, sorry, 105. C, Passal, 003, North Andover, in the R1 zoning district, for the petition of ser, serious development LLC, for variance from table one to construct a new, single-family home for section 4.121, for lot area required is 87,120. Proposed is 56,652 with the relief needed of 30,468. And left-side setback required is 30, proposed is 16.5 with the relief needed of 13.5. And I'm gonna reference the Conservation Plan that was submitted tonight, the variance plan from serious development by Christensen and Sergi dated 2/12/18. Any revision date? No?
No. Still taking that long to do the other boards, sir.
Sovereign Designs with the revised doors to be in the front as A101, what is this? Rendering plan with, again, with the revision of the garage doors to be on Boxford Street. And the other plans submitted by Christensen and Sergi, delayed, dated 2/12/15. This is just for reference, the.
Yeah, yeah.
That was signed off on the development.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Oh, it's in the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oppose the motion?
Oppose them.
Yes. Aye.
Aye?
Oh, stop it.
All right, and the motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three to two, just a quick question. It's Alexandra and I said no, so it's.
Oh, you said no?
I said no, no, I said no.
I beg your pardon. Yes, this was three to two. My, that was my confusion, I confused you.
I did, we both said no, yes, Alexandra said no as well.
The next item on the agenda appears to be a new public hearing petition at one forty-two Boston Street.
You need to appoint a clerk then.
You need to appoint a clerk? I'll appoint a clerk, we just need someone to read the motion, do we not? I'll ask Ms. Jacobs to.
Oh.
I don't have anything in front of me.
There you go.
You want me to read it?
Yes, he's a senior member.
You told me to appoint a clerk.
All right, fire, fire away, Alan.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall at one twenty Main Street, not the Andover, Mass., on Tuesday, May eighth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty, to all parties, seven thirty P.M., to all parties' interest in the petition of Kevin McLean and Melanie McLean for the property located on one forty-two Boston Street, which is map one zero seven B, lot thirty-six, not the Andover, Mass. O one eight four five, in the R two zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a special permit from four point one two one point one seven of the zoning bylaw, family suite in the R two zoning district, is required from the zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, welcome. The floor is yours, kindly introduce yourself.
One forty-two Boston Street, recently purchased the home, and just applying for variance that was existing for a family suite.
So you just want to extend the pre-existing?
Correct.
Uh, variance, correct?
So you're not making any changes to the home?
No.
So this is, is this Wally and Sue Martinow's home?
Excuse me?
Is this Wally and Sue, Sue Martinow's old home?
I don't know.
Is it? Yes. Wally's home, yes, I used to live right next to him.
You did?
I did, that was my first not the Andover home.
They were across the street.
No, 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 the parents were across the street, Wally and Sue are on, okay, so it's not the.
Ricky O's home several years ago, and Peggy Ricky O, mother of Sue's mother.
So, oh, this is, this house that had three, three families, or, okay.
That's the one.
Okay.
This look like a, if you go down Boston, it looks like a three-family home, right. I oppose this one, they came in for the thing, but you people voted for it.
You people.
Again, you people.
You people.
I hope you never need anything from us.
I know, I know. I'll move the Andover first.
So, I, I think your problem with that, that other one was that it's because it was intended for, it was intended for three, two in-laws in the original family.
Correct.
So with the two different entrances, like, it was.
It was a three-family.
It was a three-family, basically, yes. And you just want to extend it to have it, no change in anything, you're just extending the family suite to go with the home.
Correct.
He's being a nice man by observing the law.
I have my daughter living on the right-hand side, and I have my son living on the left.
Wow, you're never getting rid of them.
Oh.
Do you want to put a third one in?
I know.
Expecting to be high, anybody have any questions, comments?
Nope.
Or concerns for the applicant?
I think you should commend her for doing it the right way.
We are.
Instead of just sneaking somebody in there.
With that, is there a motion to close public comment?
Did you want to have anyone come up and talk?
Oh, I didn't ask that question, did I, Madam Vice Chair?
No.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this matter? There is.
See?
Just come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, I'm Peter Rudelsky, one forty-five Boston Street, I'm actually the above that is directly across the street that looks at this house. And what I'm here for today is to remind the board of the history of this home. This is a situation where Mr. McLean, fairness to him, I think was, for lack of a better term, hoodwinked by the real estate agents. If you look at the, you know, as to what this house actually is conformed to be, my concern is, just as you have alluded to, it's a three-family house right now. Thankfully, Mr. McLean is all one family. The history on this home is that it was illegally, without any permits, behind closed doors, divided up, and there was a, as a matter of fact, a big cabana built in the back with the garage, without permits. Everything on this property was done under the radar, and it turned into a situation when the prior owners first lived there, they had their mother and father on the left side, which is the legal in-law suite, and then the, I think, seventy-five, eighty-year-old grandmother on the, as you're facing the house, on the right side. Everything was fine, no issues, no issues taken, good people, then all of a sudden the grandmother passes away, just as you're alluding to with that other property, what happens in the future? And that's why I'm here, I need to stop the bleeding. I want to make sure this board remembers, and hopefully can do something to make sure this ends, because what happened after the grandmother passed, and then the parents moved to, stayed on the deed but moved to New Hampshire, they had a lesbian couple on the right side moving, and I emphasize that only because the board didn't realize, those people weren't family, because the Steves were saying they were family, but I found out they were married couple, they were trying to say they were cousins or whatever it was, they were a married couple, they had cats, they, they were doing barbecues out front, and then on the other side, where they had the suite, they had this older gentleman with this younger woman, when I say older, probably seventies, and not in, I mean, their children that owned the house were, you know, grade school kids at the time, and one in high school, I think. So this was a situation where it turned into a three-family, which multiplied the cars, they were parking on the grass on the right side, the, the women, and then they had their parties, and they would line up. They created this driveway, that's gravel now, when they were living there, to create that extra entrance into that side, which is not a recognizable suite. And the reason why I mentioned to Mr. McLean this hoodwink, so to speak, is because these realtors admitted to the fact that, they, they called it a suite, but they said, oh, it's not a legally recognized one in the listing. There's not much I can do at this point, at that point, to, to stop a, a listing, so to speak, but it is a situation, again, I have to live there, I don't want to be that able to rack people out and be a pain in the ass, for lack of a better term, excuse my language, but it, it, this is round three, and it's, it has to stop, and, and that's what I'm here for. Not necessarily to object to this, his daughter, congratulations, she just had a baby, this is wonderful, it's a great thing to be able to set this up and, and move her in there, but I don't want it turning into, what happens when the daughter moves out? What happens when the son's gone? You know, they're at an age, things are, they're going to grow up, things are going to happen, and it has to stop, so I, I don't know what to do about that house right now, I don't want to have to move, I don't think I should be the one to be forced to move because somebody did something illegal, I'm here to make sure things are done legally. And, and that's what I needed to voice to the board tonight, to make sure that this stops with what's going on there. And hopefully with Mr. McLean, and I've already talked to him, you know, had enough shoveling together with this weather, we've gotten to know each other pretty well, but it, it, just, you know, that's, that's what I need out of this, I want to make sure we know who's living there, and that things are done legally. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Hazavardi, on one sixty Boston Street, longtime resident of the neighborhood since I was a baby in nineteen fifty-eight, off and on, mostly on. I have no objection, in fact, I support the use continuing, I presume it's going to be legal, and I also respect the right of the neighbors to actually have some privacy too, and, and any compliance be reasonable, any compliance checks be reasonable. I was also asked by Andrew Rossi, one seventy-five Sullivan Street, to express his support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So just, just so that we, we do it on the record, my hope or expectation frankly is to, to address, I think your main concern, the, the stop, I'm not certain that there's anything anybody can do to actually stop the cycle, but at a minimum, we get this thing legally recognized, then there's at least, will be something in the record for people to refer to, and, and in this case, with the applicant coming in and doing it, doing the right thing the right way, one of the, one of the steps associated with a family suite is that the special permit needs to be recorded at the registry of deeds, so there will be something in the chain of title, and it's my expectation that it will articulate, at, at a minimum, the section of the code, if not the actual language of the code, which says, and this is for the, for the applicant's benefit, I think this is a good idea, because myself historically and the board generally has examined these things pretty, pretty thoroughly when they become, when they come before the board, is that the, the family suite may, and this is the language from section two point three seven point one, which says the family suite may only be occupied by brothers, sisters, maternal parents, and grandparents, in-laws and/or children of the residing owners of the principal dwelling in it. So what that is saying, just in, in this case, Mr. McLean, is that as long as you live there, then those folks, in-laws, brothers, sisters, kids, may live there. If you leave the property, if you go to live in New Hampshire, you, God bless you, retired Arizona, Florida, or some other tropical destination, you know, longer residing owner, and so therefore the family suite will kind of expire as, as part of the terms. Additionally, in here, there is the, the language of the bylaw indicates that the premises are inspected annually by the building inspector for conformance to the, the bylaws. So I guess my message merely is to expect, just kind of expect that to, to be coming as a matter of course. So thank, thank you for the, for the commentary, and I'm Mr. Rudelsky, and I guess I'll.
Can you just, I just have a question.
Yes.
This is from the realtor, I'm just curious, where is the family suite? On here? Is it's not clearly defined, because I think this is the bedroom level. But I'm not seeing kitchens, I'm not seeing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I can't figure it out.
Left-hand side.
So we're on full, main level, right? Is everything on the main level? Because I know it's a two-bedroom, two-story.
Yes, main level, well, yeah, but there's a garage under.
Okay.
All right, so main level, the one with the office in the back?
Yes.
That's actually going to be my grandson who was born last night, that's going to be his bedroom.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Babies.
And that's a kitchenette?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
So then you have the, the main area, so that's the two-bedroom, family room, bath, little kitchenette, that's where your daughter's going to live?
Yes.
And the rest of the house is going to be yours?
My, yep, my wife and I are occupying the main part of the house, and my son is in the right.
So that's a kitchenette, too?
No.
So it's showing here as a kitchenette?
Well, it shows a sink.
A sink. And a refrigerator, so that, I'm assuming is going to be, is there, is there still, or?
Yep. Yeah, that's how it was set up.
So a sink and it looks like refrigerator.
Yep.
He's a boy, what more does he need?
And that's the confusion of the three.
Just confirm, so that's what we're talking about, is that right?
Correct. And always the confusion was, this was the third.
Yeah.
Because of the kitchenette area.
Everything but a stove area.
Okay.
Further questions? Comments, concerns?
I think you addressed it, that he understands that, you understand that once this property changes hands, this variance is over.
Correct. Just as it was when I bought it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That it's for you and you only.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to close the public, the public hearing?
Comment?
The hearing? Don't think we closed it yet.
Did we close the public hearing?
No.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Apparently my motion didn't stand, so you're just going to just bulldoze it right over me, right? Yeah.
No, I asked her, she said we didn't make a motion to close the public hearing.
I just was making that motion.
We'll just close, closing comment, the hearing will remain open, so that the board may deliberate, move if so desired.
Well, I'm not touching you now, I don't want that me-too thing to start.
I'm going to make a motion to close public comment.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, non-unanimous.
I think it's pretty clear-cut here, I mean, it's, you do it.
I'll borrow Alan's phrase, this, this one feels like a no-brainer, although it's a, it's a tangled property with a, with a tangled history, we have an applicant before us who appreciates that history, appreciates how tangled it has been, and both public, public comment, and I think the board has made relatively clear, if you didn't know already, we've certainly just got to do our duty, not necessarily to harangue the applicant, but certainly to make clear what the expectations and frankly, the requirements are of the code, I think that has been achieved.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
And then I will.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
So I'll make a motion to grant the special firm permit in front of us by Kevin McLean and Melanie McLean for the property located at one forty-two Boston Street, map one zero seven B, lot thirty-six, not the Andover, Mass., in the R two zoning district, to grant a special permit from four point one two one point one seven of the zoning bylaw, family suite in the R two zoning district, and I am going to reference the bylaw that you gave from the Moore and Cameron Group dated two five, two thousand fourteen, and I'm also going to reference in here the definition of a family suite of two point three seven point one, did you want that with the deed to be filed? That, that the applicant is aware that if you actually do move according to the direction that the family suite poses, you have to stay there.
So in, in the, in the special permit, we will include that language.
Just in the special permit and the approval, we're going to approve the language of two point three one seven point one, family suite definition, as well as two point four zero, section seventeen A, B, and C.
Any conditions from the board?
You don't like those conditions?
I'm just making sure that there were none others, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded, why don't we do, why don't we do a roll? See, that's what happens when you're a rookie, you learn along the way, kind of. Mr. Kuscha?
Aye.
Ms. McIntyre?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
And Nathan?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, so that's unanimous, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, and don't forget, you can be, they can't come out any time to review that.
Yep.
And I appreciate your neighbors policing it and keeping it the intention that it's supposed to be at.
I found out some of that history just tonight.
Oh, a lot of history, that's.
Yeah.
All right, and we shall, we shall move on, the next is, if everybody could take, would you, excuse me, folks, if you could just take it outside, we're going to continue.
Sorry, excuse me.
We will move on to a petition. We will move on to a petition at 35 Dale Street.
Hello. I am Jay Henshaw.
Wait, we have to, we have...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Jay Henshaw for the property located at 35 Dale Street, map 37D, Lot 41, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 4.136.3, Point C, Point III, for construction of an above-ground pool in the R1 zoning district. A variance is requested under Section 4.136 of Watershed Protection Division, three uses and building requirements, C period, Double I, three non-disturbance buffer zone of the zoning bylaws. Now, sir, it's up to you.
Hi, I can't, static. Jay Henshaw, Gibraltar Pools. What we're requesting is basically permission to install an above-ground pool in the watershed. We conform to all the other setbacks, all the other zoning requirements.
Just, are you the owner of the property?
No, I'm the contractor.
Do you have permission to speak for the owner?
I do.
Okay. Is it in here?
It's in everything. I'll give you a little background on this if I can. We're making all the rounds. We've already been to conservation and planning on this.
Because I'm not seeing anything in here saying that you have permission to speak on behalf of the abbot?
There is a, okay, there, I do have a letter of permission from the abbot for probably the planning board and the conservation. Somehow, I didn't get into here. I wasn't asked for a letter for zoning. I was asked for a letter for conservation.
Well, we always have to get a letter if the owner's not going to be here and the person requesting it isn't going to be here so that we know that they're okay with what you're doing.
All right. Well, then we have a problem.
I don't think it's a matter of being asked to do it. It's just that...
Okay, I wasn't informed at all that I needed a letter for zoning. I apologize for not knowing it. I did supply a letter.
So you think you have to do it for planning and conservation?
Well, this has been, this has been, yeah, it's been a, it's been a relatively confusing situation because the way this has to all fall out, it had to go to conservation first. We basically got approval for conservation, left open deliberately in case planning wanted to change anything so that they wouldn't have to reopen the hearing. So that was the step with conservation. So they basically approved it but left it open in case a change had to be made, I wouldn't have to do it again. And we went to planning. And planning doesn't have, planning wanted to wait, they held the voting and continued it because they wanted to wait for the outcome of this meeting. So this has just been kind of going around.
Planning doesn't do that.
They did it.
Yeah, planning makes their own decision. They, I mean...
They decided not to vote until there was a decision made by the...
Well, we could decide not to vote until we decide, hear what the planning says and conservation.
You could. Exactly, that's kind of what's happening.
And then you're chasing a tail, which is ridiculous.
I know.
But unfortunately...
That's kind of what I'm stuck in here.
Because you're not the owner of the property? I don't know if we could hear it, to be honest with you, unless there's something that you can present to us that can give you authorization to.
Let me see. I have a lot of stuff here.
I mean, I would hate you to wait another month. If you can't present that, I wouldn't be comfortable listening to the application.
Let's see. I do have a letter somewhere.
Or make a decision from the other position.
I think, uh... Somewhere, I got a letter. If you can bear with me here for a minute? Maybe in the other folder.
I mean, I don't mean to make you nervous. It just, I mean, it just...
Oh, no, I know. It's just I got so much stuff here.
Please understand, it's, we have to protect the homeowner because this goes with the deed of the property. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Actually, I understand the situation. I just, I do have a letter. I just got to find it down there. So one thing I didn't put in the, I've got so many folders on this.
Well, while you're looking, I'm going to take a quick...
Yeah, I know. All right, let's go here. What you have, okay, okay, let's look at it.
I know, I know. You know NCIS is on tonight? And I'm missing it. It's a double hour session. Valerie, do you know? Have we done 142 Green Street?
No.
No, okay.
No. Well, it's not going to be...
Here, hey.
All right, so it's going to be in the other folder. Now, somewhere in this file of papers here, I have that letter.
Do you want me to grab a file, a file and look? Grab one and go through it? Just to help you?
There's a million, there's a million pieces of paper on this one.
Those are farce.
And it has, it's kind of caught in a circle here where it has to go to you before it goes to you before it goes to you.
That happens...
It's turning into five meetings now.
Happens a lot on the watershed stuff. So it's nothing that we haven't been confronted with before.
Probably now it's signed up for.
We essentially got, like I said, we got the, we got the okay.
Yeah, what I would suggest, Mr. Henshaw, is that for purposes of tonight, I would agree with Madam Chair, I'd be comfortable hearing the application, but I certainly would not be comfortable deciding on the application without knowledge that the landowner, without paperwork suggesting that the landowner has authorized you to speak on his or her behalf.
Now...
What I am comforted by, Mr. Henshaw, is that the application that you supplied offers the signature of Robert Bouyer, which appears to be the landowner, and with Jay Henshaw apparently as the petitioner. So there is some comfort that the two of your minds have met.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, there's a, there's a separate piece of paper that I would need in order to complete the file. So if you can just secure that in the next month before the next hearing, then we will certainly...
When is the next hearing?
June 12th. Valerie knows.
June 12th.
Well, but what's going to happen is the beginning of June 5th will get continued again. And then I have to meet with you guys and I'll have to go back to planning, which puts this whole project not buildable until into August. The...
I'm not unsympathetic to that death spiral kind of thing. But similarly, I'm sure you're sympathetic to the...
I understand that situation.
Authorization of the board authorization.
But I don't have a problem with this, obviously. But what I'm saying, this whole thing has been kind of very strange. It all started out with a mistake in the conservation department by Kale. She was new, I guess. Didn't understand the situation. So we went into this project...
I appreciate that, Mr. Henshaw. We are where we are. So my suggestion is that we proceed with a hearing tonight.
Now, the letter has to be addressed completely to zoning?
If you could allow me to finish, I will certainly not speak over you. I would ask you to speak over myself. You would certainly be in a position to tell the Conservation Commission or the planning board, whomever you're speaking with, on the 5th, sort the position of the board, let them, let them know where you are, that you have been heard, that there may or may not be objections, allowed to give a status at a minimum. In the intervening month, while you're digging up the piece of paper authorizing you, I would also ask you to cure that while the legal notice went out for a variance, the application is for a special permit for some reason. So again, there's just kind of an error in form here. So my suggestion to you is to cure that, to just redo your application as a variance rather than a special permit.
Okay, again, I was informed to do it as a special permit, so...
Understood. Look, they're, they're, Mr., I'm not above making a mistake either. I'm just suggesting that the problem that we have before us is something that can be easily cured.
Yes. So when we leave here tonight, will this be continued? And we do the application, I won't have to do another legal notice and all of that?
Right.
Okay.
The notes went on as a variance? Didn't?
Nope. Special permit.
It didn't? I thought I read it.
No, it said a variance is requested.
Requesting a variance.
You know what it was? I do apologize for the error. It was effective, the homeowner signed that application, which led me not to realize it needed a separate letter where other applications, he wasn't on the, he wasn't on the application, but we had a letter. So that's how it worked. That's the thing that was confusing me is all the, between the three departments I'm dealing with here, everybody's doing it slightly different, you know? And it's, uh...
Yep. It shouldn't surprise you that you're not the first petitioner to fall into this quagmire. So it's a story that we have certainly heard in the past. So if we could, why don't we proceed with what the, what the project looks like, what you're asking for, Mr. Henshaw?
Okay. Basically, what I'm asking to do is, uh... There's going to be some grading and tree removal involved. The grading is minimal. We, we've spent a lot of time placing the pool in the area of the absolute least disturbance. The grading would be a total probably about a foot and a half. It's a relatively small project. We're talking about 400 and, about 440 square feet, I think 448 square feet, a foot per night. It's a small pool. It has a, an overhanging cantilever decking, which brings the whole structure up in total. Surface area of about 600 square feet. We have complied a complete maintenance program for planning. We've got a, we've got a grading plan here. There's not, everything's going to come back to the natural grade. We've come to agreement with conservation on what trees can come out and what should stay. We've worked it pretty, pretty good. We're trying to, to not disturb as much as possible, but there's no other place on the property this could go. So that's why, that's why I'm here for zoning. And the fact that the building inspector considers it a permanent, a new permanent structure.
But the building inspector is confined by the code.
Yeah.
And a pool is within the definition, is defined as a structure. A structure is defined as a pool. So he doesn't have any discretion there. It was town meeting that stuck you with that definition.
The... But that's basically it. It's, it's a small project and we're taking great care, obviously, going through this to do it right, you know? We don't want to disturb the area. We realize that it's in the watershed. We realize that we don't want to be able to affect the drinking water in any way whatsoever. I think we're actually two, 3.9 mile, 2.9 miles from the, from the lake. We did do a hydrology report on it. We've done full wetlands reports. We've had delineators. We've done pretty much everything we can, you know? Except get the right letter, apparently, which I will do. Uh, tomorrow, as a matter of fact.
How much of it's in the watershed? All of it?
Pretty much everything on this property is in the watershed. The property predates 1984. I guess that makes a difference in what can be done and what can't be done.
How far are you within the no, your 50-foot, within the no build?
Yeah, as far as conservation's concerned, we're, we're in the 50-foot no build outside the 25 no disturb.
Okay. I'm trying to see that.
The area is completely fenced in. Everything we're doing is inside the fence. The fence is a, is a physical barrier on the 25-foot no disturb.
Are they requiring you to put special chemicals in the pool as well because it's...
No. All we, all what you really need to do with it is, swimming pools really require very, very small amounts of chlorine. So you just need to have a plan if you want to drain it to, you know, let it dissipate, and that sort of thing. So that's all in the maintenance plan.
So they have, conservation has that in there?
Yeah, implant.
If it breaks and the hole...
Yeah. The structure that the homeowner's chosen...
Above-ground pool, my dog decided to go swimming and it broke.
Different. The homeowner is pretty sensitive to the situation that's in the watershed. And it's gone to the point of spending a lot more money than he needs to put in a swimming pool. The pool that he is purchasing can't come down unless it's taken down. It can't be, it's, it's completely different than, first of all, it's rectangular, for one thing, but it's completely different than a round oval pool where it's not structurally supported by the water. So the chance of a wall tearing in a pool, in the pool bursting doesn't exist.
It doesn't have a liner?
It has a liner. And a liner can...
Put it with a separate frame.
But it can't burst.
That, it was slat.
So it can't allow a lot of water out at one point.
Right, that's what I had, was a slat pool.
Yeah, kind of went...
Because I'm right on Rocky Brook. I'm on conservation as well. Because I'm right on Rocky Brook, I'm on Conservation as well, so.
Yeah, so the idea is to put a structure together that can't let go. Now, everything's got a liner, so it can, it can leak, but at least you can control that. If it starts to leak, you know it, you can pump, and that sort of thing. So we're taking, we're taking, the homeowner especially is taking pains to, to do this the right way. But I don't have the proper letter, so.
You sure?
Yeah.
You sure, you're positive?
I do. There's a letter here somewhere, there's just so many papers. He did sign a letter.
Well, take a second and look, because that can save you a month.
You can take, uh, this is general stuff. So I have to go over, and Bouyer, Robert Bouyer. See, I just got so many papers here on this. Planning? Peter DeVina is the owner of the company that I work for. Uh, here we go.
Oh, look at that.
Look at that.
Yeah.
Look at it.
See, look at that.
Well, y'all look at that.
They're all white, you know?
Color code, you guys are color coding.
That's the best letter ever.
Yeah, isn't it?
I believe you.
Do you want to pass it around, just to see, just to see?
He went through this effort, so you have to take the time to read it.
He is a professional.
Let me say, should you make a copy of that so it's here on this file?
It's not even a photocopy.
Okay.
Is that yours? Is that for you?
You can have that, that's my copy, but I.
Why would you make a copy?
I probably have twenty of them. I've got a desk that is disgraceful, and everything on it's white, so I can't find anything. So I'm trying to keep things in folders, and in this case, I got more folders than. But I'll tell you, North Andover is teaching me some stuff.
We like to teach.
Teaching me patience.
Only if you have a gas station.
So there is, just to be clear, there is, it doesn't appear that there is a, um, there's not a location on the site where you could put this without needing relief?
Much more, much more, uh, work as well.
Maybe, maybe this, this western nook right on, right on Dale Street, that certainly would be an attractive, not an attractive location.
There's actually a sewer easement down there at some point.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if you're looking at.
Oh, that, I said, now I see it, the existing sewer easement.
That's over there. The pair consultant on Framingham did look at it and suggest one other location, but I'm working that out with him now because he looked at it without elevations and put it on the top of a hill. We'd have to cut out that whole hill to put that thing in there. So that's the other thing I'm working with on, with the planning board, will we solve that?
So give, give a little perspective on that one. My understanding is the project as proposed, there'd be about, I think I heard you say there'd be about one foot of grading.
About one to one and a half foot of grading.
And if you put it on top of the hill, what would that?
Oh, tons.
Ballpark.
Minimum of four feet, require a couple of retaining walls as well. It's not very practical. We've planned this, uh, we've really planned this to be the least disturbance. The, the structure of the pool, I could start showing you mechanical drawings on the pool and that sort of thing. But basically, there's no buttressing in the structure, so what, what, the pool's designed to actually use the smallest footprint possible, so that we can cut this right in to the grade and then backfill against the grade, so that reduces the side. Basically, it's, it's ninety-nine point nine percent of this is just the water itself. It'll be cut into the grade, backfilled against the grade there, and then followed out with the natural grade on the high side of the pool. So we're just going to kind of blend it right in there. The, there is some tree removal that has been done, obviously, but we've worked out our Conservation which ones we'll take out and which ones we'll leave.
And just so that we say it out loud, the, the footprint of the pool, I heard you saying it was relatively small, sixteen, sixteen by twenty-eight.
Uh, it's a sixteen by twenty-eight pool. I think that's a, what, four hundred and forty-eight square foot footprint. Holds a relatively small amount of water, it's twelve thousand gallons.
The board cogitating on any other comments, questions, concerns?
I don't know if that word means, so you can put it in English.
I am concerned, it's too bad it takes them so long to do it.
Got anything to say? That simple.
Wouldn't anybody like to see a picture of the pool?
This is.
Is that a?
Sure.
Do you have it, he does?
Maybe. Which folder am I, am I in?
Is it white?
Board folder.
So I'd, I'd agree with you, Alan, that this is, this is a complicated part of the code.
Oh, yeah, there's under here.
Hopefully, in the, the bylaw review, that is theoretically coming up in the next couple of years, this is something.
Pool, and you know, I'm trying to say it's an active carcass.
If it's not on the watershed, it's.
This is somewhat similar, what we'll be doing, so there'll be a lot more trees on it.
Yeah, North Andover's got trees.
It's a similar grade, too.
North Andover's got trees.
So this is the slat, right?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, did they want to go above ground?
Yeah, trying to go underground would be. Um, we can, now, it's, the, they could do it, I suppose, but it'd be a huge project. A lot of leveling, water regrading, a lot, a lot of work. And probably, if we get right down to it, they didn't know it at the time, they're probably never getting, never flying. I couldn't see the planning board letting that go through when they were concerned about this.
So is my understanding that at one point, a structure above ground was not considered a structure in our bylaw, but that has since changed?
What I read today is that the pool's a structure.
Yeah, I guess it was changed. I was told initially that it wasn't.
It was not, correct.
It was a, it was a pool, but once it became an accessory structure, I guess, that changed. Which is happening more and more, you know? The truth of the matter is, though, when you get right down to it, it's a nuts-and-bolt structure that can come apart.
Well, so is a house. So is a house, right, I mean. Is that going to an extreme?
Yes.
Further questions for the applicants? I see nobody, but I'll say it anyways. Anybody here that wishes to be heard? Seeing and hearing none.
I think most of the public comments.
Thank you, Alan.
I'll second that.
Second motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous? All opposed? No. No, no one is opposed. That being the case, board deliberations? Doesn't, uh, this does not feel like anything that I need to discuss any further. But that's just my thought.
I'm going to agree with you.
Kumbaya, Madam Vice Chair.
You've got me on board if it matters.
All right, then, is there a? She's assembling. One moment, please.
I, I guess, I need three, is that what you have to do this all night?
I can get my hands to myself.
A me-too moment, dear, right?
We're looking at the clock. What are you waiting for?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We already closed it?
We did.
So I will make a motion to grant. Excuse me, um, petition in front of us for Jay Henshaw, speaking on behalf of the owner from, um, Rob.
With the letter to support Bouyer.
Robert Bouyer, is that? Her prop, property located at thirty-five Dale Street, map thirty-seven D, Lot zero-zero-four-one, North Andover, Mass. Oh-one-eight-four in the R-one, oh-one-eight-four-five, excuse me, in the R-one zoning district, to grant a variance from section four point one-three-six point three, CII, for construction an above-ground pool in the R-one zoning district under section four point one-three-six watershed, watershed division, protection division, three uses requirements, CII three, whatever. And I am going to reference the letter from Mr. Bouyer, and I'm going to also reference the PFS land surveying dated, um, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, as well as, is there a difference? Or do I just have two because I'm special?
You are special, Madam Vice Chair.
It was a, uh, it wasn't amended plan, because, again, everybody does things a little different. One department wanted it as, as the BVD.
They're both dated the same date. I don't see revision on it.
No, I think if you look at the line, let me see, it might be something as simple as this. Uh, one department wanted it labeled as a BBW, another department wanted it labeled as a no disturb, so we had to do it. What do we got here? No disturbance line. No, you get two properties in the same line.
That's because I'm special. Just clarify that. Is there anything else in here that I need to reference?
I don't think so.
That's it.
I would just suggest a condition regarding the, uh, application.
That it's approved by Conservation and Planning?
No, that would just get them to a variance, just get a variance application. I really don't care, she says.
What they say, um, why? What do you want me to reference? That the application should be under a variance, not special permit? I think this is just paperwork.
Our, our trade is paperwork, Madam Vice Chair.
I'm just going to reference that this should be under special, a variance, not special permit. But the legal notice was correct in noting that it was a variance by the record.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, call the roll. Alan?
Aye.
Yes.
And the aye, so unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Motion's adjourned.
You're almost done.
I still have three more meetings. Yeah, unless I have to come tomorrow, I, which means four. I don't know, because they're not going to close it until Planning gets to it, so I can't go to Planning until the fifth. So, well, there's no planning next week.
Excuse me, Mr. Henshaw, if, if you guys don't mind, we're just going to close this. We're only going to be another two or three seconds, and then you guys can, can handle it. Uh, and then the last item on the agenda is just correspondence from Mass Housing dated April fifth, two thousand eighteen. I think those are all the matters before the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.